Good evening. At this time, we will call the meeting to order. And I would like to ask Ms. Catherine Cook for the indication. And after that, if Mr. Charlie Miller would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us stand. Let us pray. Lord, we thank you for this time. We thank you for this day. We thank you that you give us wisdom. If we asked for wisdom, you would give it to us. And we thank you in this uncertain times that you will answer us with certainty in the things that we need to know to fulfill the plans for Brunswick County Schools. We thank you for all this. We thank you for those that are here tonight. And we ask you to protect us all in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In the absence of no public address or... We will continue now with approval of the meeting agenda.
So.
Okay. Mr. Benton has motioned to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion carried. Thank you. Now, we will look at the approval of minutes. June 2nd, regular meeting. June 23rd, Curriculum Policy Committee Meeting. June 23rd, Operations Committee Meeting. And June 23rd, Finance and HR Committee Meetings.
Make a motion to approve a set of minutes.
Ms. Cook has made a motion to approve the minutes as stated. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Benton has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Now, we will look at consent items for approval. And we've got several of those. Alternative Accountability Model. CTE, Local Application. Interim Nursing Contract. Speech Solutions Contract. School Nursing Funding Initiative Contract. Memorandum of Understanding Communities and Schools. Early College High School Calendar. Contract with Amendment. Track Repairs South Brunswick. Contract with Amendment. Track Repairs West Brunswick. WM Jordan &amp; Company Change Orders for West Brunswick Construction. WM Jordan Change Orders for North Brunswick Construction. Bordeaux Construction Change Orders for Coast Construction. Bordeaux Construction Change Order for Waukesha Mall Construction. And Policies for Approval on Second Reading. 3620 Extracurricular Activities and Student Organizations. Number 4110 Immunization and Health Requirements. And 4230 Communal Disease. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, make a motion. Do we approve?
Okay. Mr. Lemon has made the motion to approve these items.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Miller has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion? Any opposed? Okay. Motion carried. Now, we have two action items. Those would be, number one, the addition of two counselor positions at Lincoln Elementary and Town Creek Elementary. Local Step Increase. Driver's Education Contract Extension. And Appointment to the Brunswick Community College Board of Trustees. Is... Any discussion? Is anyone speaking with regard to these?
For the addition of two counselor positions. This has been in relation to the presentation that Karen pointed in our last reading in this room, sharing the changes physically in our enrollment. We have the technical services we want to provide between teachers because we have two schools. We need to be seven or seven hundred per week about one person a week. So we would be requested more ticketing for it so that we would not have to move services and publishers while we're seeing.
Any discussion among board?
I'd like to just ask that we don't fill those two positions. I'm fine with authorizing it, but not until we know that we're going back to school with full capacity again, because there's just two more positions that'll be filled that can't do their job while we're... If we get put on virtual or with half the kids in the building, I would just ask that we don't hire that until we know we're going back with a full building of children.
Do you know if we're using telecounseling at all? I mean, that would probably be a consideration, so...
Yes. In Ms. Floyd's presentation, she talked about that those still were response groups and individual services for students. And obviously, we hope that decisions, we hope that some students in school have started the school year based on what plan we have at hand. And so, we know our students are going to actually enter the coming war emotionally. We started Jump Start today, and that was going to be a good test for us to see the needs of kids. There was definitely a gap that we had never mentioned on their part about being met with such a change for them. So I feel like starting that was two position would be the service for those schools.
Any further questions? Do I have a motion?
A motion to approve.
Okay. Ms. Cook has made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second for Mr. Miller. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yes.
Okay. So, four yes, one opposed. Motion carried. Local Step Increase. Any comments?
The state has adopted a compensation plan for certified staff in their budget that becomes effective July 1. And therefore, when our teachers return in August, they would receive their step increase as well as a $350 bonus in October. With the local budget, we would be requesting a step increase for staff that is paid on our local pay tables. And that's already accounted for in the budget, but it hasn't been approved yet. And so, in order to give the staff their funds in July and their paycheck, we're asking that this be approved prior to receiving the full local budget.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
And Mr. Benton has made the motion. Do I have a second? Ms. Cook has made a second. And any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion carried. Thank you. Driver's Education Contract Extension.
That's my... This was our year to put out the proposal for driver's education. And with what was going on with the COVID, there just was not responses to the application. So we're asking to extend our current agreement with terms of driving school for a year.
For one year.
For one year, yes.
Questions? Comments?
How long have they been with us now?
I don't know exactly how long.
Years, years.
It's been very long. Several.
Yeah. A motion to approve.
Okay. Mr. Miller has made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Cook has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion carried. Appointment to Brunswick Community College Board of Trustees.
With the impending vacancy for the PCC Board of Trustees, we have received interest from one applicant for that seat. That person is Colonel Les Tub. He submitted his interest to us a couple of weeks ago. And would like to be considered for appointment to the Brunswick County College Board of Trustees for the upcoming term. He was the only advocate that we did receive.
Mr. Benton has made a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Cook has seconded. Further discussion?
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion carried. Now, at this time, we will have discussion and announcements by the superintendent and all board members.
Madam Chair, board, as you can see on the agenda, the committee meetings are scheduled for July 21st. However, in addition to the regularly scheduled committee meeting, we were also looking at doing a ribbon cutting of sorts for the new Town Creek Middle School on that same day and actually hold the committee meeting at Town Creek Middle. Typically, our committee meetings began at 2:00, so we were thinking about having the ribbon cutting and tour an hour before. So looking at 1:00 PM on the 21st of this month. I know the principal is excited. Furniture was arriving yesterday, and he's all geared up and ready to show the community the new school. So he's ready to go, or will be ready to go. And we will have the committee meeting in conjunction with the tour, similar to what we did at the coast when we did the tour for the coast coming up. I also like to take an opportunity to introduce our new Director of Transportation who's with us. Mr. Lloyd Willis is here. He's joining us at a great time.
(laughing).
But he's coming from Carteret County, and he was with us when we had cabinet meeting yesterday in our planning. And he is ready to go and knows the task that is facing him and all of us as we go through this together. Which actually brings me to the next point I wanted to discuss briefly. I'm fully aware that not only this board, the community, everyone is waiting to hear how we will reopen schools for the 2021 school year. This is a very difficult process. It seems like everyday legislation or guidance from the governor's office or North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services or North Carolina Department of Public Instruction is changing. So what we have is a moving target. Once we think that we have a grasp on a way that we can make a plan, something moves and it kind of throws a monkey wrench in everything. Just to give you an example, from the last time that we met, there have been a few changes in the number of students that can be allowed on the bus. If you remember at the committee meeting, we discussed having only eight students. That then changed to 11, and now we're hearing 24. So, things change almost daily, and it makes our task even more difficult. In addition to just the number of students on the bus, you know, we talked about the remote learning calendar. At one point, there was... The first five days of school could not be used for remote learning. That now will possibly change. I know there was possibly, I think there's a vote on the floor in the General Assembly today that was going to determine whether or not the first five days of school could be used for remote learning. Not to mention the governor then pushing back his decision, time to tell us exactly which plan that we were going to take. So all of these things makes our job very difficult, so as you can imagine. But personally, I think it's a gamble to prematurely decide when we don't have all of the pieces together. Some of the pieces will include a survey that went out 12 days ago. The survey was to parents, it was to teachers, and it was to students to gauge their opinions on remote learning, among another, a myriad of other things. We're also in consideration of doing not only that survey, but a local survey that will have questions devised that will pertain just to our folks here in Brunswick County that will possibly ask about the options that I discussed at the committee meeting to get a feel of what parents would like to do. Also, we may need to know if parents have discussed other options for educating their children. These are things that we will need to know in order to adequately plan for the upcoming school year. The survey that went out last week, I think Daniel told us that he... The call that went out reached over 29,000 families or 29,000 individuals. And out of that number, we received 2,142 responses. That includes parents, teachers, and students. So, in my estimation, that's definitely a low number based on the number of folks that were reached. And I don't think that is enough data in order to make sound decisions. But nevertheless, my team and I, we have... We've sat around at the table many a day, and we've made many impromptu meetings with individuals and the group as a whole. And I've invited Mr. Parker from Child Nutrition, of course, and again, Mr. Willis with Transportation. And we have given some more meat to the plan that we have... That we talked about at the committee meeting. And I just want to quickly run through some of these with you. And I'm sure you'll have questions, and if we can answer them, we will. So we'll just go through some of the things, rehashing some of the things that we talked about at the committee meeting. The first of the options, and this is assuming that we are in the governor's Plan B, which calls for a 50% reduction in facility capacity and stringent social distancing, would be an AB day. This first option is an AB day. It could be a four-day face-to-face with a one-day remote learning option. This would be where all students alternate days for face-to-face instruction, Monday and Tuesday, and then Thursday and Friday. Wednesday becomes a remote learning day for everyone. But we would also use that Wednesday, middle of the week, to deep clean every facility in the system. So that's one option. But there's some considerations that we have to take in with this as well. While definitely this is not the ideal situation with the AB day, all students get face-to-face instruction 40% of the week. We're not in a school building. The remote learning plan can be implemented. Our remote learning plan team has almost finished the final touches of that plan to be submitted to the state. So while I don't want to jump the gun in saying that everything is finished with the remote learning plan, I can assure you, it is more robust than it was when we started remote learning on March 16th, given a weekend to just plan for remote learning. However, even with this plan, it will cause a definite burden on teachers. Because when you have an AB day and doing remote learning on and off, teachers are planning not only face-to-face instruction, but they're planning remote learning instruction as well. So they're serving, they're pretty much planning all the time. There were some considerations for child nutrition. You know, with this plan, all children have the opportunity to be fed at school two days a week. But when at home, we would have to figure out how to get meals to the students. We can't assume that the state will allow us, as they did when this first took place, that the state will allow us to use yellow buses to take the meals home. So that's another consideration we have to keep in mind. And going back to what I said earlier about the changes. If we were to wear masks on the buses, if you remember, the governor came out and said, or I think it may have been DPI, I'm not sure at this point, students age 11 and under would not have to wear masks. Now, that would give us, at that time, it was a limit, would limit students of... To eight on the bus. If masks were worn by everyone, that would increase the capacity to 24. Now, where this information... Why these plans were made and how this came about, we have no idea. Actually, I printed off an email that State Superintendent Johnson sent to Governor Cooper today, looking for some transparency into how these decisions were made, because they're... It was just kind of out of the blue seemingly. So the transportation piece again remains problematic. This AB day would require multiple trips, which would eliminate any dual runs. Buses would have to drop loads off much earlier than the school day begins, so they can head out for runs for the same grade level. Drivers would have to do triple runs, which would, of course, cost substantially increased costs of fuel, wages, and benefits, and wear and tear on the buses. And another piece of this is that if we went with AB with all of these routes requiring drivers to run multiple runs, would put them in a full-time position, which would require benefits, retirement, those types of things, in HR perspective. And went... Once things went back to normal, we wouldn't have any full-time work for these people who had been doing this. So these are some things to consider. One of the things we also sometimes miss is that while we can plan for the district, the work will take place in the school building. So there's some school-based considerations to take as well. So under the AB option, we would be able to see students every day on the assigned days that they came. This would allow for wellness checks. This would allow for socio-emotional monitoring. This would allow for those counselors to do some work with those students. But it creates some inconsistency for our most at-risk students. We would also have to staff much earlier to allow supervision for the students who would be dropped off earlier because of the multiple runs. That means staff would have to get to work way earlier than they typically would. And the same for the take-home process. They would be staying later. Schools would have to keep staff to supervise these students waiting for buses to return from multiple take-home loads. One of the biggest pieces of this is also a community consideration. Parents who are able to stay home with their students would be able to supervise and be involved with remote learning on the days that they were home. However, parents who have to work, they are left to find supervision for children during these alternating days, and that could be problematic, possibly causing some employment issues. Not just people who are working outside of Brunswick County, but our own Brunswick County Schools employees included, because we have many of our folks who have children in the system. So that's the AB day. The four-day, one-day-off of remote learning, including the buildings. You would also look at an option of an AB day, which would be five-day face-to-face, Monday through Friday, face-to-face, AB, on and off, with the same considerations that I just spoke about for AB. The same thing for AB week. There are some districts that are looking at going one week on, one week off, and Wake is doing one week on and then two weeks off. Me personally, I just don't think that's instructionally sound. And that may work for Wake, that's fine, but I don't think that is what is best for Brunswick County. Another option that we discussed at our meeting, and we've been talking about, is what we have termed hybrid learning. And in this hybrid learning option, high school students would start with 100% remote learning Monday through Friday for the first nine-week grading period. That would give us an opportunity to get them started, but also give us nine weeks in which we could see where we are with COVID, and if there are any other things that the governor's going to put in place during that time. K-8 students would start 100% face-to-face learning. They would be in the buildings. And there, of course, there's some considerations with that as well. Instructionally, with this option, we are able to provide the opportunities for socialization and foundational learning that is crucial for child academic and social development for our elementary students. There is no way we can teach reading. There's no way we can teach the rudiments of math. There's no way that we can teach a kindergartner, first, second, third, or fourth grader remotely by giving packets or by doing something online. These students need to have face-to-face learning with their teachers. And while this may not be the ideal situation for middle and high school students, as I said earlier, we have worked hard to bolster the remote learning plan and provide an opportunity that would be much better than it was when they had the remote learning opportunity early in March.
But Jerry, didn't you say that you could only have 50% in the building?
That's correct, and I'm getting to that point. When you move to the hybrid learning, when you have a bill, have a high school that is completely vacant of students, because the high schoolers would be home, we discussed and actually explored how we would move students to meet that 50% reduction criteria. We were looking at possibly moving seventh and eighth-grade students into our high school buildings to use that vacant space, which would then bring down the middle schools substantially. And we could possibly move some of our fifth graders, possibly fourth and fifth grader, depending on the school, into some of the middle schools to balance them out and make sure everything is around 50, right at 50%. So it'll be a utilization of space. Now, that also means that transportation is... You know, you're going different places. Parents would have to be notified, your grade-level students will be attending, for example, if it was Leland Middle going to North High School, the eighth-grade class would be attending for the first nine weeks at North Brunswick High School. So that's one of the options that we've looked at there. And again, with a kind of a second option for the same hybrid learning piece, would be a Monday through Tuesday through Thursday, Friday, with Wednesday being remote learning day for everyone again to deep clean buildings. So there are a lot of considerations to take place. But these are the three, four, if you look at it differently, four options that we could possibly present to you to determine which route we want to go. I think, as I said before, this is not going to make every person happy. Whatever option, other than going back to school as we were prior to March 13th. But what we will have to do is make sure that we have all the pieces in place that we can make a sound decision. So if we're going to look at doing a smaller-scale survey for our community, we can get on that as soon as we... As soon as possible, as soon as tomorrow, to gauge where the community is. And I definitely want to get their input on specific pieces of these options before we can make a decision.
Is the survey still available?
The survey is not. It was out for 12 days because we wanted to be able to get the results back. And since that survey was not one that we did in-house, we wanted to be able to get the data in time that we can make decisions here locally.
How are other districts making decisions already? Because I've heard that other districts are saying, "We're doing this, we're doing that."
They have. Other districts have made decisions, again, with the assumption that the governor's going to go with Plan B. And again, that's an assumption, which is why I said just sometimes you may be a little premature.
I wouldn't bet on anything he's doing.
Well, because we could... He could... We could say we're going to go to Plan B. But the governor could come back and say, "We're going to be on Plan C." So all of these, the work and planning that we've put into Plan B is out of the window, out the window. So while we want to wait for his decision, we want to also have some plans in place. While B is some of the options we have for B, C is what we did prior to... I mean, when we got out in March. C is pretty much going back to remote learning with an enhanced understanding of how remote learning can be implemented. And that's why our remote plan will be submitted to the state, as any other district would as well. Plan A, the ideal plan to go back to school, that's easy to implement as well. Operations has done a phenomenal job of making sure that we have all of the social distancing stickers on the floors and the plexiglass on the front offices and hand sanitizer, and we've got a stockpile of masks and that type of thing. So we're ready to go to A. We're ready to go to B. I mean, ready to go to C. But we also have to make a decision on B, which is the most difficult of the options.
Well, when is he planning to let everybody know?
When he made his announcement, I think it was July 1st, that he was not going to make an announcement on schools, if I'm not mistaken, he said, "We would come back in two weeks." So you're looking at possibly, what's that, the 15th?
I heard 17th.
17th, that's why I heard.
That's why I heard the 17th yesterday.
The 17th. Is that enough time?
No.
Who's to say? Personally, I don't think so. So that's why other districts are making decisions now.
It only seems like we... There's only one good choice here, which is the flexing the 9th to 12th out to the to the virtual learning. I mean, it just... I can't imagine trying to teach a kindergartner through the computer, not to mention as a parent, childcare at home is about impossible. Every place you could possibly put your child for daycare is full now. I just can't see it. I mean, a ninth through 12th grader could stay home alone and virtually work on their work safely. I don't see how you could do that with anybody below that. I just don't see an option for the community any other way.
Well, that's why I want to make sure we can give the community an opportunity to give their opinion. to give their opinion on that as well.
Well, I would say that the survey that was done through no fault of anybody with that type of participation is invalid. So, we, if we want to get the community's input, we need to strike another
I agree.
attempt here with schools pursuing their own student bodies, parents 100% participation somehow. But it's not any good to get a 10% participation rate and think you got any information at all.
Like you say, you may not know, some parents may have decided to homeschool, but there's no way that you're going to know that. Some may go private, even though the private still has all the social distancing and learning issues as well. But you may have, but there's, like I say, you don't know.
Well, I made a, I made a comment before the meeting to Dr. Oates that maybe that question should be in the questionnaire if, because I've heard that comment also, under no circumstance is my child going back to school. And so.
And that's just, and that's not just here in Brunswick County. That's statewide. Every superintendent has had that same conversation about students doing.
That creates a financial impact on the school system, of course. And we need to know that upfront if we can get that information.
But I, I've also had several calls and texts and stuff from parents in my district, high school-age kids, that feel very strongly that their kids need face-to-face, not virtual. And, and I personally feel that way. I mean, I, I want all of our kids to go back to school.
Oh, yeah, I do too.
And I wish there was a way we could do that.
This is to me what, what will happen. The high school parents will vote against the remote.
Virtual.
Yeah. Remote learning, because that's not the best situation at that level or for anybody, really. And the middle school and elementary parents will vote for that option. So I'm not sure, even if we put it out for a vote, it's, people are going to vote for what's the best educational opportunity for all Brunswick County students, which is our responsibility to, to make a decision about. So it puts, it's a rock and a hard place, really.
Well, it's, I mean, it's our responsibility, but our hands are kind of tied too.
Right.
And, and I want the public to know that, that if it was up to the five of us, we'd be, probably be going back to school. Everybody, so.
They're putting up the bumper buildings all over the county and.
Yeah, yeah. Because I, I feel strongly that we need to be back in school, but just, I want the public to know that our hands are tied to some extent as well.
I'm like, Mr. Benton, if it comes down to voting on these issues, the one option that puts the most kids back to school is the one that doesn't allow the high school students back for nine weeks.
Now, that, that's assuming that we're given option B.
Right.
Okay.
We may not be given.
No option.
That's true.
That's the thing.
We just need to approve an option B.
Mm-hmm. Right. Well, it's obvious we will be waiting on the governor. But I want to thank you, Dr. Oates, and your cabinet and, and your team for working to provide at least a basic foundation for all three options in the event that whichever one is chosen. Thank you for working on that. And I look forward to getting an answer from Raleigh so we can, we can move forward.
That's it, isn't it?
That's all I have.
Okay.
Go to close session.
Okay, do I have a second? Motion for closed session.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you.